Let's come to order, the Planning and Zoning Board for the City of Cape Canaveral is now in session. Patty, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Ms. Gentilcore?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Doctor, here.
Mr. Stroud?
Present.
And Mr. Thorpe?
Present.
Okay. Thank you.
Just take a minute here to do something. Do we call you Eugene or Jean?
Uh, Jean is fine.
Okay, very good. I tend to use first names as we do business. Uh, if we have a big crowd in the house, I keep it more formal. If we have a small group, then you can move along faster with first names and informality, so, but, but still follow the Robert's rules. Here we go. Our first thing is to approve the amendments. You have the minutes from your data pack. Are there any additions, corrections, or comments? Doing none, I'd like to have a motion to approve.
Dr. Miller says let's have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Anyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, you have, Patty, you have the roll call, you can, you can check that one off as unanimous.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, let me get the next thing. Our next order of business is an administrative site approval for eighty-seven eighty Astronaut Boulevard for McDonald's. And Brenda, we'll let you lead us through that to get a better understanding of what we're talking about.
Sure, so that one is more of the FYI. I don't know if you recall, a little while back, we passed an ordinance that changed some of the provisions in our city code to allow the city to do staff administrative approvals if the site plan was going to be a minor change. So we're just letting you guys know that that happened, because that's one of the things that the code says we need to do. Whenever we do it, the subsequent meeting, we let you know that it happened. And they were just expanding their freezer storage a little bit. And it didn't really change the footprint of their building or anything, so very minor. So that's, that's all for item two.
All right, do we need to express an approval for that item?
No, there's no action technically needed, it's just more of an FYI.
Very good. Then we just move on to item three?
Right.
Okay. Site plan approval for the Holiday Inn Express at Shorewood. You can take us through that.
So, um, this project is at nine-nine-five Shorewood Drive. It's Holiday Inn Express Hotel Project. It is, the things to note, I'm not going to go through the packet, you know, very thoroughly, but the key things to note is that this is part of a binding developers agreement. So the developer's been working really closely with the city and our city attorney to get certain provisions into the site plan. And some of the notable things include some sidewalk connectivity. There is a conservation easement on the property. There's a requirement for, there's a piece of the property that's technically not on this, this parcel, which is south of it, that has to do with the larger, what used to be Cape Corrie Vacation Resorts. And so there are some dumpsters there. So there were some provisions that said that it need to be maintained a certain way, I included photos in the packet. Um, and then there's just some bike and pad infrastructure that was added to that. So a lot of it is landscaping, bike and pad connectivity, um, and some other provisions that were expressed in the, the developers agreement. Um, this is a four-story building, hundred-and-fifty rooms. Access will be off of George King and Shorewood Drive, so not necessarily through the city. It'll kind of, you go through the port. Um, and we are recommending approval.
Okay, um, for those of you who don't have the complete history, I'm not gonna go into it. But I will say that there is a standing agreement that the Planning and Zoning Board and city and all the attorneys, all the concerned people got together and determined what you could continue to develop on that property. And so this is a continuation of that agreement. They're gonna build a regular garden variety hotel. Uh, I guess it's, is it a condominium hotel?
No, it's just a standard hotel.
Standard hotel.
The other thing I guess I'll note is, I wouldn't necessarily have caught garden variety, but they did, even though it's not in the overlay.
I do, and thank you, I didn't mean to insult the builders.
Yeah, I know.
It's gonna be.
That, that brings up an important point, is that even though it's not in the economic overlay, they're not getting the additional height, but they did bring a lot of those architectural elements into the design of the building. So I think that's important to note also.
It is not garden variety, it's a nice-looking, uh, I, I just meant to say it follows all the rules and.
Right, yes, they hit all the requirements.
I didn't spot anything that jumped out as a pokeout from the requirements, but I'll ask each of the board members if they had any additional questions for clarity.
Yeah, somebody, we have the applicant here if you have any questions.
Okay. We'll start out by saying, asking if the applicant has anything to add or want to tell us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a hotel engineer. I really don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Been involved with this since, I think, back in the nineties, and it's kind of just evolved. Like you said, it was, it's part of an overall developers agreement. We've recently gone through a third amendment. Um, so we, I think, tried to work out as, as many of the problems as we can going through that developers agreement. So now we're just seeking to get to the site plan approval process. We have tried to blend the hotel in with the Cape Corrie facility, as far as landscaping and architectural features as well. So we're, we're not trying to get it to stand out on its own, it's, it's, it's part of that whole community and is intended to blend in with it.
That's gonna be a great location for you, because people come off the ship, they can look right over there to a place to stay, can't they?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, anything else, Mike?
Can I answer any questions if you have it?
Okay, then I'll start to the left with Eugene, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, how about you?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, there was a letter that was sent to Dave Dickey on September the eighth, and it appears that the civil engineering consultant had about a dozen questions that they asked that were to be addressed. The one of them that stood out to me mostly was a time limit on the yearly engineering inspections for the storm drain system. Evidently, there's gonna be some type of perforated sock pipe.
Stormwater systems designed to tie into the Solana Shore, Solana Lakes master system.
Yeah, I saw that.
But to alleviate some of the impact to those systems, we're, we're putting in an exfiltration system underneath the parking area. And it's a very good comment, they do need to be inspected, uh, so we're gonna add a note to the plans, either be done on a six-month basis or yearly.
Yeah, I've done some exfiltration systems in stormwater storage, and a lot of folks got to understand those require maintenance over periods of time, because plain and simple, they silt up.
Yes, yes, they do.
Absolutely. Again, I just saw the dozen questions down here, and Dave Dick, uh, Dave Dickey's not here, but you are, and I just wanted to make sure.
Nothing really jumped out as.
Nothing really jumped out, except that one specific.
We are, we will add notes to the plans when we do our, our next middle back to the staff, that, that there will be a yearly inspection.
I sit here and look at stuff like this all day long, takeoffs and such, and estimating, so. All right, no further questions.
Okay, how about you, Dr.?
None at this time.
You okay?
I'm just wondering when you plan to break ground.
I wish I could answer that for you.
I wondered, yeah.
Their way in pricing, um, I think it's due actually Friday. Uh, so I think how the pricing comes back will dictate when they start.
Okay.
If it's a little hot, I may wait it out a little bit longer and, and see if the prices come back bad a little bit. We shall know a little bit later.
All right, as soon as you can.
But if it's not, I mean, they're not putting it off for two years, I mean, they're anxious to get.
Well, it's, it's gone on so long, I was just wondering if, you know, this is with them.
They're anxious to be moving forward as well, uh, they just want to see what the final pricing is.
Okay.
With the, with the, I'm sorry.
No, I thank him, that's it.
Do you have any bottleneck in your supply chain? Do you see any big delays for your materials? Hard to say, I guess.
Everybody's seeing that, but I, I don't know to what extent they're, they're gonna see it. Site-wise, I mean, that's all we kind of get involved with, it's, it's been pretty, pretty good as long as you can find a contractor. If it's not busy, um, but, you know, the material as far as the building goes, I, I'm sure there's gonna be some delays. So I mean, we're experiencing it over here at the, the MultiGen facility as well, so it's just.
Yeah.
Something, something we're gonna have to deal with.
Yeah, it's the time we live in. Yeah, I just, again, I want to say, this is not a garden variety hotel. I, about once a meeting, I manage to get my foot in my mouth. That's why I mix toothpaste with my shoe polish. Old joke. All right. If there are no further questions, then we're about to ready to recommend the approval of this site plan. Can I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Patty, would you call the roll?
Mr. Russell?
For. Approval.
Ms. Gentilcore?
For the motion.
Dr. Miller?
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
And Mr. Thorpe?
For the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, uh, site plan approval was passed, and, uh, we move to the next item. Thanks, Mike.
Appreciate it, sir.
Next is a very interesting renovation for the city. Uh, site plan approval for the Veterans Memorial Park. Tell us about that, Brenda.
So this one is a little different. I guess I'd say it's a little bit in the gray area, because we're not necessarily approving a structure, but there's gonna be some significant improvements to the site. So we thought, you know, in abundance of caution, we'd put it before you guys. A lot of it is gonna be landscaping and kind of decorative elements. But the applicant is the city, and Gustavo from Leisure Services is here to, um, speak on any specific questions you have, but we are recommending approval. And the site is, um, it'll be just east of the library, on the library property, which is a city property. And, um, I know it's been kind of an initiative that's been ongoing for a few years now to kind of redevelop this site into something a little more useful, if you will, so.
Gustavo, do you have anything to add to the input?
I, I do not, it's, um, just to give you guys a brief history on how this whole thing came down. It was gonna be called Whimsy Park. Councilmember Kellum felt that rather than calling it a different thing and having a very small veterans park adjacent, a new park, why not just call the whole area Veterans Memorial Park and expand some of the amenities, reverence, et cetera? So we went, like Brenda said, before COVID, through almost two years of public input meetings, public surveys, then the Culture and Leisure Services Advisory Board meetings. Then we put the renderings out to the public and let the public vote on which version of a redevelopment they would like, and then it went before council. And then it went, obviously, through the budgeting process, and here we are about to build it. So I'm not, I was asking Brenda that perhaps this should have fit somewhere before all that. But we're here, so just wanted to catch you guys up on what had happened.
Is this being paid for by the out-of-the-city budget, or is it being paid for by the veterans, or?
No, it's, it's all city-funded.
Okay. Okay, just curious. And I see you've got a gathering place there. Is it a place that'll have a, a dais, a band, a bandstand, or what's, what's the vision for that area?
Unfortunately not. Uh, there, there will be a gathering space. As far as a bandstand, um, they did not want anything that was too active in nature. But perhaps we will be on time once we have a site plan for an upcoming project, which is, uh, expanding the plaza and promenade. Uh, as part of that development, perhaps a bandshell or stage might be part of this whole redevelopment. But for this particular project, that wasn't an amenity that, um, in the public service, we had was of, of priority of any kind.
Well, that's a pretty area, it's, uh, it'll be fun to go down there and walk around it and be in it. Start to the right side this time. Susan, do you have any questions? I'm sorry, Nancy? Do you have any questions?
No, 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 I think it's gonna be very, very nice. I'm looking forward to it. I go down there quite a bit now.
Oh, good.
In the real hot weather, I'll take my dog and I walk all in the woods, I clean up.
Yeah.
But it's, it's nice to have shade, and I think this is just gonna make it better.
Thanks, absolutely, yeah, padways are gonna be the key, because right now, it's uneven and you're walking on grass, you know, so.
And ducking trees.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Miller?
No, my only question was about the funding.
Okay. Well, okay, I'll say some more words about funding here when we get to the end of our discussion. It's just incidental information for you. Okay, Steve?
No questions here.
How about you, Eugene?
No questions.
Okay, it looks like we're all happy and satisfied with the information pack. Funding is, uh, this city, in the, in the area, era we're in, we're in the hot campaign time now, you're gonna hear a lot about city funding and city spending. The other day, I heard an individual make a, a statement, "No, the city's spending all this money, we're going farther into debt." All the money that's being spent on the community center, the renovations for the city hall, for, just pick it, pick, pick a project. All that money is already appropriated, available, on standby, and there's no debt associated with it, unless we choose to incur a little bit. But the city has very adequate cash reserves in the little bank up the street here. That bank, you started about, started out as the Ca- Cape Canaveral National Bank in the sixties. It's had many names, it's now Wells Fargo. It's always been a friend of the city. That's where we keep our money. And there's a lot of money there. Our city is well-funded, not in debt. And if you want to call it debt, it means that we've got money earmarked on the com to pay for all these projects. So when you hear in the heat of the campaign that the city's running up to debt, question that.
And if I may add, that the CRA pays for a lot of these projects, which is pretty healthy, if you will.
Yes.
So that's how we get a lot of this done.
Very good. So, enough said. Do we, do you need an approval for this?
We are recommending, we're asking for approval.
Okay. Then if there's no further discussion, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve. Patty, call a roll, please.
Mr. Russell?
For the approval.
Ms. Gentilcore?
For the motion.
Dr. Miller?
For the approval.
Mr. Stroud?
For the approval.
Mr. Thorpe?
For approval.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes and everything is approved. Now we move to the quasi judicial part of the program. And again, I'll ask you to take us through that, Brenda, if you're the one.
So usually our city attorney reads the ordinance into the record, but I guess I will do that this evening since he's not here. So this is ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty-two-one. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending chapter one-ten, Land Development Regulations, section one-ten dash one, Definitions and Article nine, Supplemental District Regulations, Division four, Home Occupations of the City Code to comply with recent legislation adopted by the Florida Legislator, Legislature, related to home-based businesses. Making conforming amendments to the Schedule of Zoning District Regulations and Other Provisions of the City Code to comply with said legislation. Providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, resolutions, and incorporation into the City Code, separability and an effective date. So the gist of this one is, during the twenty-twenty-one legislative session, similar to our private property element that we adopted in July that we brought before you, the legislature made some changes, and they essentially are saying that if you have a home-based business, local governments cannot, um, apply any additional regulations that you wouldn't apply to a normal business. I think some of the key provisions is it, it kind of puts the underlying zoning of the residential district in question, because it essentially erases the underlying zoning. And it says that you can occupy a business within your four walls as long as you don't have any deficiencies for parking, or have any noise, or other state or other local county ordinances are violated. So that's kind of the highlight of it. I included the bill here, so I don't know if you guys have read through it. But essentially, you can operate any business in a residential zoning category per the state now. They would have to go through, generally, for the, any business in the city, whether it's commercial or home occupation, you have a business tax receipt that you have to get, and then any additional licenses that the state requires you to get, you get those, and that's what you would apply for your BTR, your business tax receipt with. So that's what, um, that's what we're here to consider. This is one that I would say we don't necessarily have a choice on either. And I think Anthony did a good job of catching all the sections of our code that this touches to comply with the new state law. So we're recommending approval for this, and we're trying to expedite it. So you guys are looking at it now, and we actually have it slated to go to council next week as well for first reading.
So if I get it right, if you live in a residential community, you want to operate a business, you can operate that business inside your four walls, but the outside has to look the same as the community used to.
That is our, that's our understanding. So as long as you don't have spill-over parking, um, it's not supposed to be an accessory dwelling, from my understanding, it's supposed to be in the primary structure, still, um, you know, following the rules of parking and any other kind of noise.
Rules of parking, rules of parking, very important.
Meaning, yes, park on the site, in the designated parking.
Just like you used to.
Right.
As a homeowner.
And it shouldn't, you know, some key things is it shouldn't, uh, create excess noise, heat, smoke, dust, glare. So it really shouldn't be a, a industrial or high-intensity use happening, because then you trigger some of our other nuisance ordinances in Cape Canaveral County and potentially have some problems with the state, depending on what you're doing there, if you're not properly licensed.
I noticed the paragraph, sub-paragraph B in the ordinance, proposed ordinance. It's on page two of nine in the ordinance draft. Sub-paragraph B says, third sentence down, "For purpose of this section, secondary." Supposed to be secondary, "Businesses are required to be secondary to the property's use as a residential dwelling." Great statement. So for purposes of this section, secondary means a use that is incidental and subordinate to the primary use. So, I guess, I look into the future and I see that as a tripping point. If somebody's gonna operate a business within the four walls, that's not secondary to that part, that individual. That's a business that just happened to be in a residential area.
Right.
So, anyway, I'll just make that comment. It, it, if we ever stub our toe in the future, it'll be this sub-paragraph B. Cause I'll give you an example, if you want to go down Harvard Drive in Cape Canaveral, and just about four houses from mine is a truck repair business. And it's supposedly done in a garage, but all the trucks are being worked on or not being worked on are parked out on the driveway awaiting, awaiting their turn. And that, to me, is not incidental, but I suppose that's just a boil that we'll have to lens in the future. Good example of operating a business in residential. I don't know why the legislature did this.
I know. I was gonna say, um, just kind of anecdotally, I was reading an op-ed by, I think it was one of the sponsors of the bill, and the gist of it was that they were trying to spur economic development by allowing people to be entrepreneurs without jumping through hoops.
I see.
And I'm not sure that is going to be accomplished here. I think, obviously, it's gonna create some problems, but as I said, this is one of those ones that we're kind of reacting to now. It's already done, and so now we have to go through our code and make sure we don't trip up on any of the state provisions. So, yeah, I, I would hope that these businesses are ones that are more in the line of, um, working from home, computer desk jobs, and that we don't go into the realm of other things that are questionable. But that is something we'll have to deal with as it comes.
Well, I noticed that the old ordinance had a lot of line-throughs. In fact, it's almost entirely lined through, and we had a lot of good stuff there.
Yeah.
We worked hard to get it that way.
I know.
And to get it so that the neighborhoods looked like residential neighborhoods and not businesses. And now we're going the other way, I suppose the pendulum swings.
But that's part of the larger discussion that we've had, I think, in front of this board and in front of council. You know, that the state is kind of tripping on its home rule. And so we are forced to react a lot of the time and figure out how we fit in and kind of keep the nature of community, but also comply with the state.
Well, you know, we had a good paragraph in this old ordinance, it's line twenty-eight on that.
You're looking at the actual ordinance?
The actual ordinance, line twenty-eight. And it said, "No single da-da-da, no display of goods or external evidence of home occupation." Well, I'd like to, I wish we didn't delete that, and I don't see it in conflict with the state. In other words, I'd like to ask about that. I'd like to ask Tony about it. And before we blanket approve this, I'd like to have a little discussion, but that's, that's my thought. Now I'm gonna start talking and ask if.
I can make a note of that and talk to Dave and Anthony about it. Maybe we can get some changes before we bring it to council next week, or if we need to push it off. But, um, I think that's fair, if you have some. But Anthony's not here to address that section, but I think his goal was to catch all the things that might trip us up with the state law. And I think part of the language in there is that we can't treat it differently. So I think if you read that, that might be saying we treat it differently.
Okay, Eugene, you have any questions?
Yeah, do I, how about HOAs? I don't see HOAs mentioned in the ordinance here.
They generally have a different registration process, so I don't think it necessarily applies to them.
What about the parking?
For HOAs?
For HOAs.
I'm not sure how to answer that question, to be honest, because generally, if you're an HOA, you, you know, you're on a site that has adequate parking.
HOA, remind me of that acronym, acronym, what's HOA?
Homeowners Association.
That's what I thought, so what's that got to do with parking?
Well, there's, they have regulations for it on HOAs with parking, and I was just wondering how they're gonna address that. I'm thinking about either my neighborhood, we have an HOA, and someone having a home-based business, even if they have two vehicles, you know, more than two vehicles, it's gonna be street parking.
So I think this has come up before, um, related to, I think it was vacation rentals. And I, if I remember the answer, it's, you guys usually have your own bylaws, and so I think you can still enforce those. But as far as the city's concerned with properties that don't fall under that category, this is, this catches that. So it wouldn't necessarily affect, um, it wouldn't necessarily affect the way you guys run your HOA in your, on your site, in your bylaws.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, commercial businesses are inspected by the city. Just whatever inspections, whether it's health or, but there are visits by the city that are made to commercial businesses. Are these going to be inspected also by the city? Is the city gonna be keeping an eye on these home-based businesses?
I think.
Shouldn't they have the same right?
I don't, I don't know. I, I'm not sure I can answer that either. Like I said, I think our goal is to treat. Like I said, I think our goal is to treat it the same way we do with any code enforcement matter. Um if you see something, it'd be reported. Now, there's a new, another new state law that says you can't submit anonymous. Uh code enforcement complaints anymore. You have to put your name and address and contact information. So if somebody is going to have an issue, we would hopefully be able to address it speedily. Um but I don't believe outside of code enforcement, I'm not sure what else we would have to do. Outside of that and maybe what other state licenses require you to get um inspections. You know, like if you have a liquor license, you have to do certain things. Those things won't stop, um from my understanding. But as far as the city's concerned, we can't necessarily place the restrictions. I think it's really more of a zoning thing and then it will become a code enforcement thing.
You know, the, there's certain building inspections that are done. I would think that if you're gonna do, that this is gonna take place. That in my eyes, that they would fall under the same uh same deal. If you're gonna run a business.
In theory.
We have the right to come and inspect, wanna make sure that you have the right documents hung.
Right.
Uh showing you know, uh your employees' rights.
Fire inspection.
Fire inspections and, and.
Because it wouldn't be treating it any different than a business and that's what this provision says. So that's a good point. Um I'm not sure I have a definitive answer for you on how we would handle that though.
I saw in here where there's a requirement that you must reside in that location uh to run that business. And you're also limited by the amount of employees.
Right, I think it's supposed to be two max, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's two max and you're required to reside in there, and that's a good thing. Because if not, somebody would come in and buy a house and set up a commercial business. And then next thing we know, we gotta go over here frying donuts and, and, and selling it. That's just.
Which may also be happening whether we know or not.
Or we may, may have them uh uh pouring a piece of concrete in the backyard so they could set up some manufacturing processes. So, yeah.
No, I, I, I'm, I think when we had some internal discussions, these are questions we asked, those are questions I asked. Because it, it seems like it, it's very confusing and like to Lamar's point, I don't know why they did it. Um but to the best of our ability, I think we've caught it as much as we can. Can stay mentality, the character of this, the city, um and then still do some of those code enforcement. And licensing that you're required to get anyway, if you are a business. So I'm hoping that that would catch those things. Like I said, if you have a liquor license, you would still be required to have one.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, and if there are inspections associated with that, then the state would be required, the way I understand and interpret the law. To do those inspections there as well.
Well, now the state held our feet to the fire about future land use. Land use planning. And we did some rezoning and so nowadays, if you change the zoning, you have to change your land use plan first. Then you change the zoning.
Which is what we did for phase one of our um city initiated rezoning.
So they, they held our feet to the fire about that. And uh a long time ago, if you ever wanna read about it, I, it might be in that little book I wrote about Long Point Road. Where that, that was the defining case, went to the Florida. The district court just before the Supreme Court, the district court, and the district court settled that issue. Said you have to amend your land use plan before you rezone. And as a result of that, we got a condominium on Long Point Road. That, that ruined the character, that residential character of that neighborhood, and the neighborhood fought against it. Supreme Court was making noises that they were gonna come down on it, so the district court ruled. And there you have it, we have to change the land use plan. I go through that little diatribe. It says, if we got a land use plan that says we've got a residential neighborhood, then by George, we've got a residential neighborhood. And if somebody wants to come in and change and operate in the business and they get a little out of bounds, I think the city oughta push back hard. Let's, let's don't be shy about that. Or at least I won't be and I, and I will encourage the planning and zoning board to add backbone to it.
I think as a, as residents, as a city, there are things we can do to kind of address. The legislative process and some of these um laws they're passing. But I definitely think that there's a disconnect between the laws they're passing there and then the things we're having to react to. Even for the department of um, for DEO, for example. As you said, we just transmitted the property rights element. That said, we have to do X, Y, Z in our comp plan. In a sense, this is in conflict, but I don't think they're thinking those things through. They're just making laws and then we're having to react. So are other people, you know, uh in DEO, FDOP, whatever agency in Florida, you name it. We just have to figure out how to work within the rules.
Well, the, the way the legislature works, you got those people up there, they run around on the floor. They talk to each other, well, that'd be a good thing, let's run a bill through that. And they don't think it through. And so here we are with this one, and they have not re- related it to our land use. Uh or zoning laws that they almost hung us about in years past. And now they wanna trample over them, so.
And I don't think they're necessarily. You know, holding hard onto some of those old um issues, if you will. Those old land use things that they would harp about, as you say. Um I think some of that time has passed unfortunately.
Well, if, then they'll have to change land use organization, or ordinances of it. Oh, well, that's a discussion that can go. Uh let me get back on track here, and Steve, you had the floor, and I piled on with you.
I, 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 I'm good.
Okay. Doctor Miller, you have anything?
No, all I wanna say is, Steve, I agree with you. This didn't address all the other things that are already in place. I read this as just, we can't do anything above the rendition of what we do with everyone else. I, I don't like this. I, I think it's got the potential for lots and lots of problems. Um for not only the neighborhoods, but for enforcement and those kind of things. But I also read that we don't have a choice.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, I just wanted to make my little input too. We've, we uh, we have means and we can turn the laws back on. We can turn them against the legislature if we go and do our homework and do our reading. So enough said. Uh Nancy.
Like everyone else, I'm not, I, I don't like this at all, but I think we have to. My, I'm just curious, I think that this is gonna have an, an impact on code enforcement. And the resources that we'll need to enforce through, you know. Is there any way we can go back to the state and get some reimbursement for this? I, I, I had to ask, I know, yeah.
Good try.
That's highly unlikely. We do have three code enforcement officers right now, which is technically a lot for a lot of cities. Um I know there are others that just have one, for, that are much bigger than us. Um I think generally they do a good job, but I think part of this, people don't understand the process they have to go through. They have to give people due diligence, you go before the special magistrates. Same thing as if you might be arrested essentially. Um so I think they're pretty capable, but yeah, it's, this is one of those things that, once we change it, we're gonna have to see how it goes.
Because you're gonna have neighbors looking at someone doing some of these businesses and it's not going to sit well. So I, I don't think they're gonna hesitate to make, make those phone calls.
And that's why I mentioned the other law that passes, that now you have to, you cannot remain anonymous to do code enforcement complaints. So we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
With neighbors.
Well, I'm mistaken in the belief that the city's always had on our ordinance. That if you file a grievance for code enforcement, you have to sign your name.
Now, you couldn't, it could be anonymous before. There was no requirement that said you had to.
Okay.
But now the state is saying you have to.
All right. Anything else going?
Thank you.
Right, going left. Yes, please, come, come to the microphone and say your name. It's a public hearing and everything's on the record.
Let me show you.
Yeah, say your name and your address.
Um I'm Kathy Stokes and I live in uh seven sixty-eight Lego Drive in Puerto del Rio. And I'm the ex-official member here. And I, I know that in the condo, there was somebody who was renting out daily. In an Airbnb fashion, their extra bedrooms, and they threw a fit. You know, that they did this and they had to stop. Now, would that be allowed under this?
Well, the way I get it, and I'm not the world's greatest expert, but the way I get it is the condominium association. Are we talking about a condo? Condominium Association has its laws, bylaws to operate by. So when you sign your name to buy a unit, you agree to operate by the bylaws. And those bylaws are kingdom unto themselves underneath these state rules.
But is that understood? Cause I can see a person going, well, it's a state law that I can do this.
Well, if I can jump in here, so we have our other ordinance that we passed recently that deals with vacation rentals. So this is kind of a different element. So we, we're addressing vacation rental with a bunch of new um requirements. You have to register, you have to pay fee, all of that. Um and we're employing a third party company to kind of crawl the city, if you will, and see how people are renting. Um so that's, that will get addressed there.
So that's a, that's a known name right now. It, it looks to me like a great potential for conflict. But condos have their rules, and the state blew us up about condos because, well, condos are falling down. And they're gonna hold their feet to the fire, to the board members down there. They have big troubles coming if they're not already on top of them. That condo fell down, they would not wanna be on that board. Because the state says that board's responsible to enforce its laws, rules and bylaws. And yet here comes the Airbnb situation that's gonna override those bylaws. That the state passed strict laws. I, I've got a big book with the law, I got a copy of it.
A lot of things are in conflict, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah.
With the laws you're passing, they don't talk to each other.
Well, Kathy, Kathy raised a great point. That, that is a real conflict coming. The condos are. They're not weak. The condo associations in the state of Florida are gonna challenge that, so you heard it here. All right, enough said. Uh where are we? We're about ready to approve an ordinance change. So we've had a little discussion here. Is there any change or comment? That anybody wants to raise or make to that ordinance before we recommend approval? I don't like it, but I'm gonna hold my nose and, and vote for it. Cause we just, it's just one of those things, we're gonna have to drive it around a while to see if it works.
Exactly.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve or disapprove? If you wanna disapprove, that's okay. We could disapprove it, send it to council, and they'd be mad at us for not giving them a recommendation.
But then it puts us in a tricky situation with the state, so.
Right. All right, we're gonna have to play ball on this one, so. I'm listening for.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion while holding my nose.
Yes, I do it reluctantly.
All right, what is our motion? I didn't get a definitive uh.
A motion to approve this.
Okay.
Approve the ordinance.
And we have a second.
And I second it.
Yeah. All right. Patty Caller, please.
Mr. Russell.
For the motion. Stinks.
Ms. Gentlecore?
For the motion.
Doctor Miller?
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Mister, Mister Thorpe?
For the motion.
Thank you.
All right, we've done what we needed to do. We're just gonna have to drive this and around, see if we have problems with it. All right, that, it finishes our regular agenda, doesn't it?
Problems like that.
Uh do we have any reports or open discussion that anybody has an itch to talk about? Go ahead, Brenda.
I'd like to break something up. Um if you weren't aware, last week we had a meeting over at the Radisson for FDOT. For two projects they're proposing along A1A. I think I saw a couple of you there. Um so I just wanted to, uh a lot of people came, it was well attended. A lot of people came and I think some people already had their minds made up. But I just wanted to remind everyone that this is not necessarily city-initiated. That it's um a resolution that's been in the works for, before my time. Uh twenty plus years that we've been asking for a certain number of things to happen on A1A. Um with a focus on safety, because the reality is a lot of people unfortunately are dying on the Florida roadways. Um if you're not familiar, there's a, a publication that comes out every year called Dangerous by Design. And Florida has eight of the top ten deadliest regions nationwide, eight of them are in Florida. Um and Brevard and the Volusia, this, the Space Coast is one of them, in the top.
Well, that roundabout.
That's, that's not true.
Okay, um.
That roundabout is not gonna stop. It's not gonna cure, stupid.
I, I'm, I, I'm not.
People are gonna run across that road, and they always have and they always will.
Right, but I guess I just wanna say from a planning perspective, and I sit on the TAC with the. I am the, the technical advisory committee member for the city. I sit with the TPO. And I um interact with them and FDOT a lot, so I get a lot of information. And I just wanna clarify, if there's any kind of misinformation going around, I wanted to be able to clarify that. Or have people come to me directly, or there are project managers for um FDOT that you can talk to. And we have a frequently asked questions, um for sure. But I also wanna remind everyone that this project is five years out, it's in the five-year work plan. It is funded, which at this point is kind of rare and a good thing. Because there's not a lot of money going around right now. We took a hit with um the gas tax during the pandemic. And right now FDOT is trying to figure out ways to fund these projects, and they're only gonna get more expensive.
You said it was funded, is it funded or not funded?
Roundabout is funded.
It was five years, it's in.
It's in the five-year work plan for funding. The northern segment is not funded, it's only funded for design. So I just wanted to make some of those clarifying remarks.
Funded for design. That does mean it's not funded for construction.
Yeah, we don't know when or if we will get that, but the idea is that if the roundabout's in place. Funding for the northern segment would follow for the construction.
So as if I learned it correctly, the funding is five years out. And that's it.
For just the roundabout for right now, yes.
So it may, that roundabout may or may not happen then.
No, that, if, if there isn't, um. It can happen, it's funded, the money's there.
Okay.
But if there is, I guess, considerable pushback, FDOT is listening to the community.
Well, I was gonna.
And if there's really a push not to do it, then the funding will go away.
Go somewhere else. Uh my neighbors, most of my neighbors are against it, but that's just input. What, how, what way was, uh, was the breeze blowing in, when you went to that?
I think initially, like I said, people came in with um their minds made up. I kind of was trying to eavesdrop a little bit, and I think some people were starting to understand. I think a lot of it is misconception with roundabouts. Um a lot of people compared to the one in Viera, it's not. If you look at the design, it's completely different. It's, it's modern and it's, it's just different. Um and so it's not the same.
Did, did they have a picture?
Yeah, there's plenty of pictures. They, there was a model at the meeting.
Is it in your brochure?
Through it.
Is it in your brochure?
In this one, I don't know. Actually, yeah, there's a picture.
Yeah, I've driven through the one in Viera. It's just a regular Pleno roundabout like you drive in Europe.
If you've got a couple of minutes after this meeting's over, I have a very large uh document of the thing printed out. Where you can actually look at it.
Yeah.
Uh it's in a three by, two by three foot uh document. I'll pull that out of my car, I do have that with me. By the way, I spoke uh at the city council. I'm also in contact with the engineer. And I, I attended the city manager's uh meeting that he had a deal at the park over it. And I have also attended the FDOT deal. So I've, I've been, been trying to study up on this thing and, and uh, and uh see what, what we should do. And what the effects are gonna be to certain portions of the community.
Well, uh there's a picture of it. It works just like any roundabout I've ever driven on. What, what else is in your book that's gonna improve on how a roundabout works?
I'll pull that document out and let you take a look at it. But it's actually two projects. Uh one, the one project is, is the roundabout, but the other is the northern.
The northern segment is the second project, that would come after, and that is not funded for construction.
And that was the bike path.
What's the northern part?
The bike path improvements.
The northern part is the bike path improvements, is that what that is?
Yeah, that would be a complete street design on the northern part. Yeah, that would be a complete street design. On the northern part, we'd get medians, bike path facilities, improved lighting, it would just be overall controlled turns, a bit safer, if you will.
So, since I do some FDOT work, I look at a lot of their documents, and I'm used to going to their site. So currently, our right-of-way that FDOT has here in our city is approximately 68 feet wide. In order to do these improvements that they're talking about in the northern corridor, one version of it shows going 90 feet, so they've got to buy up land on either side to do the widening and adding the things that they need to.
There would be right-of-way.
Yeah, so, and another design showed 100 foot. So they've got to chew up more footage on the sides of the road, but the state document showed 68 feet in width.
That would be reduced from the initial, some of the initial.
Now, we're talking about the roundabout, not the bike path.
Well, no, we're talking about the northern part now.
The northern part, yeah.
Okay, well, how about the roundabout? They got enough land for it?
They would purchase, there's a vacant parcel, which is north of the bank. That would be purchased to do it.
Yeah, they'll try and.
And that one is an alignment project, and so they have a new standard that they look at, a new analysis they do, and, you know, they're not trying to build roads in the traditional way anymore, and I guess this site hit all of the things for a roundabout, and that's why they're proposing it. Because for a while, we thought it was going to be a traditional alignment, and that's, when they told us this is what they're proposing, said, okay, let's see how, let's see how it goes. Let's go through the process.
All right. Well, thank you for that. That's a good, good, can I keep that?
Yes. It's on our website, and if you guys, like I said, I just wanted to clarify, and if anyone has questions, please refer them to myself, Stephanie Johnson, who's our PIO with the city, or go directly to DOT, please. Don't go to other people in the community.
Do we have an idea when this will start?
I'm sorry?
Do we have an idea when this will start?
Five years out. We have funding for, in the five-year, like I said. If you look at the program, I don't think actual money hits until 22, 23 fiscal year. So, we've got a little bit of time.
Well, okay. Good job, Brenda. We're glad you gleaned all that information, and thank you for sharing it with us. You've done a good job putting it together. Anything else in the room? All right, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please second.
All right. Call the roll, and let's, you don't have to call the roll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you. Take care.